All right, guys, welcome. I'm going to call to order this Board of Education meeting. It is April 29th. It's 6:14. We had HR meeting go a little bit long, but that's fantastic. Looking to do roll call and then after the prayer, if Ms. Daniels-Williams, will you lead us in the pledge? Okay, thank you.
All right, do you want me to do the roll call first?
Roll call, then prayer.
Okay. Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Hold on. Ms. Prin?
Here.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Here.
Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Ms. Darling was here, but I don't see her. Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Lampfier is absent tonight. And Ms. Raymond. We have Dr. Andre, Dr. Sarfati, Mr. Poska, Mr. Donovan. And our student members are not here this evening. I don't know where they are. All right. Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find the spirit of unity and understanding, which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. Amen.
So no recognitions or presentations tonight. I do want to do a little bit of a reminder of what I talked about at the last meeting, about kind of staying focused when we're in these meetings. We put a lot of work into the presentations and stuff. So if we could refrain from side chatter and from typing on our computers, that would be fantastic. Just keep us all focused and present in the moment. Okay, thank you. So I'm looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda. Thank you, Ms. Gilio.
Seconded by me.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. All those, I don't, you're not sitting right next to me, so I can't see when you're done writing. So all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Before, well, do we want to do the public comment question or do we want to go right into HR really quickly?
Up to Dr. Andre.
I think we could do a public comment.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, can you give me the first public comment sheet? If you're ever sick of this role, we can find something else. Doesn't like public getting your steps in. First one up, Gary Hoffman. Thank you. And that is it for first public comment. So jumping right off of HR is if everybody is okay with this, we will move. HR first? Okay, we'll do, we're going to bump HR up on the agenda if there are no. Okay, so I'm going to turn the floor over to Ms. Gilio for the HR committee that we just wrapped up.
Okay. I'd like a recommendation, I'm recommending that we suspend the rules to consider items from the HR meeting held earlier this evening.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Then I would like to, we have several items and one of them, Mr. Hoffman just alluded to. So we have three new positions that we approved as a committee and are sending forward for approval to the full board. The first one is the Brentwood Coordinator, the job description for that, which we recommend you approve. And I motion that.
Hang on one second, these aren't printed in the sheet. So I'll motion two. I'll second it.
Thank you.
All in, okay.
Question?
Is there any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passes.
Okay. The next is the Middle School Special Education, I'm sorry, English Language Learner Coordinator for K to 8. I'm making a motion that we approve that.
Second.
Who said, Ms. Prin? Thank you. Comments or questions?
Yep, Mr. Johnson.
Should we look into adding, as Mr. Hoffman said, some, that we're looking for someone with administrative experience to the job description?
We certainly can if that's what we'd like to do, I think. Dr. Andre, do you have any comment?
Yeah, it's always preferred. I think, I just want to be careful and caution us. If we say it's a must, then we might limit. But I think if someone has that admin experience and leadership experience, then it would be a more viable candidate.
Do we wish to make a change to that or?
I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the two different job descriptions. And under qualifications, on the Brentwood Coordinator, it says bachelor's degree required, master's in special ed preferred. And on the ELO, it says master's required, master's preferred. They both require a certification. The ELO requires five years of teaching experience and super, it says five years teaching experience and supervision experience is preferred and the knowledge of best practices for elementary, middle school ELO. The Brentwood just says administrative experience and/or evidence of leadership abilities. So I'm not sure what language you would want to insert or change on the ELO, since it says five years teaching experience and supervision experience is preferred. That opposed to adding a line, I just don't know what it should.
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable with both descriptions. They both came from the directors of ELO and Director of Special Education. Again, I think it gives us a lot of flexibility in making sure that we have the most viable candidate. But I do appreciate Mr. Hoffman's comments.
So that it says it's preferred maybe is going to cover Mr. Hoffman's concern, I think. So I think, do we have a motion on the two?
Yeah, the motion is to approve it as is. Just, I think Mr. Hoffman's comment was about administrative experience. And I feel like if you are supervising teachers, it's helpful if you have teaching experience and supervising teacher experience. So I don't know.
Well, we could take a vote and see. So.
Well, when you guys have your conversations after, when you do your interviews and then you, is that something that you guys would discuss post-interview as a team? And as HR representatives on the interview team? Is that something that you guys outrank for other qualifications?
Right, we do have, we have the complete.
Okay.
Job, job description and the person's experience. Letters of recommendations. We would know even prior to interviewing, how, what experience the person that had.
Mr. Johnson, sorry.
That's all right. No, I mean, I agree that, yeah, I mean, this is something we can definitely cover in our review of the person or, you know, the interviewees we have. And we can, you know, look into those aspects of what leadership and what supervision and what if, if it applies to administrative supervision as well, you know, ideally, that'd be great. But we don't want to eliminate any candidates that don't have those qualifications.
I can't see it over this.
I know.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this before we take a vote? So, all in favor?
Who made the motion? Who seconded it again?
The motion was made by Ms. Gilio. It was seconded by Ms. Prin. Did you want all in favor or roll call?
No, we can do, I just, I normally, you're not, Reagan's right here.
But you can't.
So I normally cheat and I'm like, okay, we're all like checkmark, checkmark, checkmark. So I didn't realize how controlling I was.
But these aren't on the sheet anyways. So I don't know how helpful it would be. I'm writing them down freehand.
Oh geez, okay. Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Now I have to get back to my other sheet here. I just moved off of the, oh, okay, all right. So that was the second of three. Okay, the last of the proposed new positions is Middle School Special Educational Coordinator. And so we also are moving that forward to approval from the full board. So anyone have any questions about it, comments?
The motion is by Ms. Gilio.
Oh, we need a second. Yeah, I did, I made the motion.
I'll second it.
You? Comments or questions in regards to this position?
I think we talked about it quite a bit during the budget process.
So.
If there are no other comments or questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, we have personnel recommendations presented tonight, which we recommend be approved. And I make that motion that we approve tonight's personnel recommendations.
Second.
Prin seconded.
Any questions on those recommendations?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. And finally, we have a recommendation to elect Tricia Kaufman to the position of New Searls Principal for the 2024-25 school year at an annual salary of $103,300 total. And I'm making that motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll second it.
Raymond, comments or questions? I know we met with you earlier in committee, so we were able to ask you questions and get to know you a little bit there. Do you guys have any questions, Mr. Johnson?
Just my whole path to being on this board is through New Searls, as I was a PTO member there. And we still actually do the yearbook every year for New Searls. So I'm excited for you to be taking on this position and to be in touch with you when yearbook comes around again.
Original Facebook. Okay, any other comments or questions, Ms. Raymond?
Yeah, I said it during the committee meeting, but I'll say it again so that it's on the official record. I'm really pleased that we're promoting from within and having that continuity for this community. So it's good, it's good to keep that institutional knowledge.
Yes, we're very excited. Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Want to give her her first directive?
Yeah, yeah. So we arranged the agenda for you, like tonight, so that you can go out and celebrate. So you don't have to stay. But I just want to publicly congratulate you. It's been a real pleasure to see you in action over the last couple of years and your leadership has been just incredible. So as you started your position here in the district during COVID, which was hard to navigate and form relationships, but we really just seen your interpersonal skills emerge, your communication, building relationships. You have tough shoes to follow with the Hawaiian, but there's a solid foundation there. And I know that you have the skills and expertise to take that school to even new heights. It's, it's in a great place right now, but we're really thankful for you coming forward and really looking forward to the next few years. And New Searls, I'm really, really excited and thankful for your leadership. So I can't say enough positive words. It was one of the best conversations I had with, in an interview in the last couple of years. It just, I saw different qualities come out and just really saw a different angle and perspective in your leadership. And sometimes it's really hard to go from an assistant principal and like to a principal and demonstrated that you are ready. And again, so I'm so excited to have you in that role. So congratulations. And first directive is to go out and celebrate tonight. But you need to be at work.
That concludes tonight's HR.
Yes. Oh, it's a nice note to leave on. I will hand, hand the floor back to you, Dr. Andre, for superintendent's comments.
Thank you. And I want to welcome everybody back. Hopefully, everybody had a restful and relaxing vacation last week. First, I want to congratulate Gary Hoffman on winning the NTU election. He's the next NTU president coming forward. So congratulations. Over the last couple of years, I felt we had a very positive relationship and collaborated with the NTUs with Adam. And I'm looking forward to continue that partnership. So congratulations. Acknowledgements, I want to take this opportunity to congratulate Ella Brazicki, Nashville High School South, class of 2024, a member of the South Girls Lacrosse Team who reached the 200th career goal milestone last week. You may recall hearing about Ella. Earlier this year, her sculpture won the Scholastic American Visions Award for Art and is on display at the Korea Museum of Art in Manchester. Certainly Ella is a student of many talents. Good luck to Ella and the lacrosse team. By the way, Selt is playing Bishop Curtain tonight at Stellows. So go Panthers. I also would like to acknowledge Birch Hill Elementary School for donating this once an impressive 35 pounds of apples, 10 pounds of carrots and many canned goods to the Nashville Soup Kitchen in Seltum. The effort was led by third grade teachers who delivered the goods to the soup kitchen to be sure they arrived for a timely distribution. Many thanks to our teachers for rallying the Birch Hill community in support of this soup kitchen. I appreciate their compassion for the more vulnerable in our community. I also would like to draw your attention to define Nashville. We would like to join the city of Nashville in encouraging you, our family members and our staff to consider taking the City of Nashville survey. It's the first step in the city's effort to define a Nashville brand. The survey can be found on the city's website at nashwa-nh.gov. Thank you very much. They very much want to hear about all the good things happening in Nashville and what the community has to offer. Again, the survey can be found at the homepage of the nashwa-nh.gov website. Just a plug there. That's a great place to talk about the excellence of our schools and the, and the support. So just a little plug, don't forget about the importance of our schools. And lastly, we received great news today. We got in the McCarthy Middle School. We received a temporary occupancy certificate. So we passed all the inspections, both fire and, and fire and code inspections. We received, our elevators are in full operation. So we are ready to go. So it's, we have one, one more round of inspections that will happen next week. But we're able to now receive our desk furniture and start moving in. So it's, it was a very big step, a big hurdle that we passed this morning to ensure McCarthy was going to open on time. So I want to really thank the JSSBC, the BOE, the BOA, the community, Hurryman and Harvey and the construction for really taking on this project, being on, on time, on budget and right where we need to be. So in my next, because of these certifications, we can start more tours and open it up to the public. So big hurdle we, we crossed to you. So that's all I have.
That's really exciting news. Yay, a building that works. Okay, board member response to superintendent comments. I'll start with Mr. Johnson.
No, just good luck to South Girls in playing BG right now, because the boys had a tough time of it. But they, they only held BG to 14, so that was, that was a moral win.
Ms. Prin?
Thank you so much for all the great news and I can't wait for a tour of the new middle school.
Ms. Daniels-Williams? No comment? Okay.
No comment.
Quick, quick to the draw. Darling?
No comment.
Gilio?
I just wanted to say that I heard from some of the staff from Elm Street who went and toured the McCarthy Middle School and everything I heard was so positive. It was really refreshing to hear that after watching all these many months of work, years of work going into it. So I was happy to hear it.
Raymond?
Yeah, piggybacking off of that, there was a lovely article in the Nashville Ink Link last week. Last week, I don't remember if it was during school vacation or the week before, from someone who had toured the building and just was blown away by how beautiful it is inside. So that's lovely. And I just want to say congratulations to Ms. Brazicki, Brazicki, I think that's how you say it. That's quite an accomplishment. And it's great to see our student athletes, you know, excelling in lots of areas. So good for her.
Panthers. No, we're a North family over here. Battle of the Bridges this Thursday for the girls' lacrosse team. So we'll be on opposite sides of the.
Opposite sides of the field.
Okay, I have, I have nothing to add. I'm excited about McCarthy. So we will push this right over. Our students aren't here, we're being stood up. We have no committee on budget, obviously. So I will hand the floor over to Mr. Claffey for Finance and Operations, because Ms. Lampfier is out with a back injury, unfortunately. Are you okay running this?
No, but I was thinking about her back when I made that face. I'll try it.
Yeah.
What choice do I have?
None.
So the first item was the presentation by Led Street and the Boys and Girls Club. Am I?
We're, we're actually not.
That, I just, I just, that was.
It's on here.
That was, that was really incredible, incredible. And then I recuse myself. Oh, you would like to speak?
Yeah, just for the reason why it's removed from tonight.
No, I had the floor.
I'm sorry. So the reason why it's removed, Led Street and the Boys and Girls Club have a couple of meetings with the city this week. So instead of doing the presentation tonight and having unanswered questions, so we're just postponing it while they have all those meetings, be able to come forward at the end of May and have everything outlined for you in a cleaner package. So they thanked you for the support in the Finance and Operations Subcommittee, but they have a few milestones coming up in the next couple of weeks. And it'll be a cleanup presentation next month.
You know, I was ready to do that, but the chair said we're going to wait. So don't do that again. Next, we had a contract with our trainer. And I recuse myself because I've known the owner and his wonderful wife for a long time and I've been a patient. So maybe Mr. Donovan.
Okay.
It's a three-year contract, right?
Would you like one of us to make the motion for you?
Oh, yeah, sure.
I'll make the motion. The motion is to approve the contract between Performance Rehab Incorporated and the Nashville School District at the high schools for 2024, 2025, '25, '26, and '26, '27 school year sports seasons. I don't have an amount, but the count is 91-103-1408. 53628. That's a lot of numbers.
I'll second.
Are you going to second or are you going to recuse?
Oh, you're right.
That's why I was confused.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Now we can talk about it.
Comments or questions?
I can speak to it if you'd like. The athletic director, Ms. Gingras, was, was here to speak to it. We've been working with this company for a long time. They provide the athletic, the training support at all the games. The cost of this is, is a very good price. He's not, this isn't just, he's not doing this to sort of make money. He is very involved with the athletic programs at the high school for many years. He even sent his son to Nashville South as opposed to going to Londonderry High. So, but the, the price itself, even though we didn't officially go out for bid, Lisa talked to some people and, and the cost for the first year is $64,778. And that gets you two athletic trainers at every.
Oh, wow.
So that's, that's a very good price.
Questions?
The numbers are outlined in, in the contract. If you want to peruse them, you can scroll a little bit, but.
Ms. Raymond?
No, I just wanted to say, so I have a student at North who does athletics and he was injured last year. And it was the athletic trainer who really like got him through it. And then she worked with his physical therapist when he was ready to come back to sports to make sure that they were following a plan to get him back up, you know, not too quickly and not too slowly. And we were just really, I was just really pleased with the attention that he got. So.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I mean, I was a second that because I'm, I'm, my son being an athlete just returned to play after being in concussion protocol. And the trainers were excellent, even through the break and everything, working with him to get him back on the field. And, you know, and not to rush, as much as he wanted to get back on the field quickly, they made sure not to rush things and to follow, you know, the protocol, which was great to see.
Yeah, it's nice being a parent and seeing the trainers down there and knowing that you don't have to run on the field even though you really, really want to. Yeah, Julia last year took one of those field hockey balls to the, the bone on her wrist. I was like, shake it off, let's keep going. The trainer was like, she needs to go to the emergency room. And I was like, fine. And then she was fine in the ED too. But mother's intuition. Okay, so going back to the beginning. All those, any other comments or questions? Being none? Okay, all those in favor of approving the contract, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay.
Back to you, Mr. Claffey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Been looking for recommendations to approve the purchase lease of 16 printers, copiers for the 16 school cafeterias from Specialized Purchasing Consultants Corporation in an amount not to exceed $18,840. Account Food Service, SRF, 91.2100.99256071221.
Anyone want to make that motion?
I'm sorry, I'm gonna, yes. The person reading it can just say, I move that.
Oh, thank you, yes. I move that we approve.
And then I can second it.
And then you'll second. Okay, thank you, Mr. Claffey, thank you, Ms. Raymond.
Well, Dr. Sarfati hasn't given me a lot of practice with actual motions, which is actually kind of nice. So we have a second.
Yes, yes. Any comments or questions?
So I, in that meeting, I wanted to know what the actual cafeteria staff wanted. I know this is an overage and it has to be spent before July 1, but I was wondering. but I was wondering if it was just these printers that they wanted or was there something else that they needed? And I thought that like there's a meeting, I think tomorrow at the office with them. And I was wondering if this could wait till someone actually asks them? Or is it something that because it's brought to the board that we approve now or?
Can one of you speak to the discussions surrounding the copiers being the priority?
Well, that's what the, the director would like. And there's going to be one in every kitchen, so I would assume they would want that. It's a tool they can use. They've never had it before. They've had it at the high schools, but they haven't had it everywhere else. And part of what's happening here is during the year, when there was free lunch for all, the food service fund built up a significant balance, one that has, they've never had before and, you know, over time they'll never have again. So there's a, the state has required a spend down plan. And this is one of the items that we're putting forward as part of the spend down plan.
What do they do with the photocopies in?
No, they're more printers than copiers. I mean, they can think of a one that you'd have at home, but a high-powered one.
Makes sense. Mr. Claffey?
And, and I think that we wanted to make sure that the teachers were able to have access to these too. That Mr. Coffee can speak more.
Ms. Gilio, do you remember the conversation with the finance committee had about amending the? That's okay, you're busy.
I'm not on the finance committee.
You weren't there? I guess you wouldn't remember, but now, so we voted to, we moved to amend it so that teachers or staff would have access during the school day. But hearing now that they're printers and not copiers, I really don't see the need to go revisit that. I misunderstood.
And, and, but, you know, I did check with IT. They, if, if you happen to be a teacher nearby the cafeteria, if your classroom's near there, IT can put that in as an option of a printer to choose if you'd like, so.
And it looked like, I just saw in their, their air print compatible. So if you wanted to print something from an iPad or a phone, you could do that too. I do that.
Would you happen to know if these are similar to any of the? I, I can only speak from what I saw at the high school as a teacher. If they're similar to the printers that are at the highest, they are not?
They're like some of the, the Conica printer, not the copier, the printer. So they're more like the printers.
So I'm, I'm okay with, with that being omitted. Is that going to be a problem that we, the committee voted? Yes, Ms.?
Because my question is piggybacking off of your question. Is that something that the Board of Ed really needs to vote on who has access to the printer? That to me seems like a building level decision matrix as opposed to a board decision.
Well, I'd have a follow-up question to that is if it's accessible to outside of food services. But I'm assuming that when they need to replace the ink, it's coming out of a food service budget. So if you're letting teachers and other staff use it, then.
Well, yeah, the, the cost of these, this is going to be as part of the lease, like all the other printers and copiers that we have through SPC. But yes, they'll pay for these printers in the food service budget.
But, okay. So the, the motion is the same as what you've made earlier?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want me to reread it?
Sure.
The motion is to approve the purchase slash lease of 16 printer copiers for 16 school cafeterias from Specialized Purchasing Consultants Corporation in an amount not to exceed 18, 840. Made by Mr. Claffey, seconded by myself.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Look at that carbon copy answer.
And finally, looking for a recommendation to approve the FY 24 February and March transfer report.
You can say, I move.
I move that we, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm, that we approve the FY 24 February and March transfer report.
Great, I'll second it.
Thank you.
Comments or questions? Being none, all those in favor of approving the transfer, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
I do have a question though for finance.
Okay.
On the agenda, it says an update on the crossing guard posts, even though there's no mention. Has there been any change since the finance committee? Are we still having the same vacancies?
The update basically said by, we made the change earlier in the year to make a one-hour minimum for the morning and one hour for the afternoon. That has improved the amount of crossing guards. We still have openings, but we have fewer than we did earlier in the year. So Chris Lassard, who's in charge of that hiring process, feels that that was definitely a step in the right direction. So we're not where we want to be, but we're better off than we were earlier in the year.
I saw that the, as of the finance committee, the vacancies had cut in half from where they were before. But still, I forgot, one, two, three, 12, one, 19, no, 10, 10, I can't count. We have 10 left. So what do people do if they want to be a crossing guard now that the weather is lovely again?
Contact Chris Lassard or Human Resources. Be happy to work with you.
Okay, now we are moving right along to the Committee on Policy. So Ms. Raymond, I will give you the floor. Thank you, Mr. Claffey, for stepping into that role without notice or planning. I appreciate it.
Give me another chance.
Yeah, you, I will give you another chance. You did a good job.
Okay, I just have to scroll back. Not good with everything being on the computer as opposed to in my hands. All right, so Committee on Policy, we met on April 16th. We did a lot of work last month, so, but we only have one that's for a vote to this evening. And then we have one, two, three, five, six items that are on their first reading. So if people have questions, we're available for questions now. And then they'll be coming up for a vote in May. So I move that we approve policy JFABD, Education of Homeless Children and Unaccompanied Youth.
Second.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none? Okay. So all those in favor of approving policy JFABD, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
So if there are no questions on the others, our next meeting is on May 21st. It's late next month. And I just want to call everyone's attention between now and then to BEDG, which is Meeting Minutes. There were quite a bit of changes to the laws. The policy committee has been working on that policy for three months now, four months. We've been putting quite a bit in there. So if people have questions, bring them to the next policy committee meeting or bring them here. And JLCD, which is administering medication to students, that policy hadn't been updated in, I don't know, 15, 20 years. And so our school nurses have completely rewritten some of the forms.
So your next meeting is on May 21st, which is also when we need to present to the Board of Alderman our budget.
So our next meeting will be rescheduled.
Reschedule it or do it maybe earlier, like 4:30 or 5?
I can never come early on a Tuesday.
Okay, so you'll, you guys can work together on, okay.
Oh, I'm glad we found that out though, because that would have been disappointing. So our next meeting goes to be determined.
Yes. Okay. Okay, and that's it for policy. Thank you so much for all that work. Curriculum and evaluation? Mr. Claffey?
Yes, we had a few presentations to start. We had a presentation by the Nashua North Advanced Manufacturing Students. They explained all the, everything they've learned in putting together this adaptive cart. It was quite a, quite a crew. Including, and obviously they adore their teacher. The, there's a librarian from the National Public Library who presented us with ways that teachers can access their materials, put together curriculum. And then we had a presentation, recorded presentation from tutor.com, which is a free ser, a service that's free for students. It's paid for by the state of New Hampshire, so I guess it's not free. And then finally, we do have an item to vote on, but I'll let Dr. Sarfati add to what I just said.
I think you covered it all, but with regard to the Year of the Book Grant. So I worked with Danielle Wells from Bicentennial. I want to give her a shout out because although Bicentennial did not receive the Year of the Book Award, we did apply for a Summer Readers Grant. And I do believe that Bicentennial is going to be awarded that grant. So that was a lot of work on her part. So I want to make sure I give a shout out to her. And additionally, Sunset Heights Elementary and then also Led Street Elementary. Those two librarians, Damon and Stacy, worked really hard and we were able to put a great proposal together. And they were both, both schools were awarded the Year of the Book Grant. So Mr. Claffey will have a motion to read tonight. And we're looking, we're looking for the board's support to be able to accept the $25,000 grant for each school.
That's fantastic.
Okay, comments or questions? I'm sorry.
Rules are important.
I know. I, I, I do appreciate it. I move that we accept the $25,000 Cliff Year of the Book Grant Award for Sunset Heights and Led Street.
Second.
Comments or questions, Ms. Raymond?
Is it $25,000 to each school or $25,000 between?
Each, so 50,000 in all.
Wow.
But 50,000 in materials and presentations.
That's fantastic. Excellent work all.
Yes, exciting. Seeing no other comments or questions? All those in favor accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. For that, and we've already done Human Resources. We have no unfinished business, so I will turn the floor over to Dr. Andre for new business.
Thank you. In your packets, you received general assurances for FY 2025. This is a document that the BOE approves every year and authorizes the president and myself to sign to signify that the National School District is in compliance with all the general assurances from the New Hampshire Department of Education of, to any agency receiving federal dollars. So again, in your packet, there's about 41 general assurances that we must ensure that we're adhering to. It also is operational definitions on what do they mean by certain definitions that are outlined in the federal grants. Mr. Donovan, in his office and myself, went compared the 2024 assurances to the 2025 to see if there was any changes. There were a few. And we're fully confident that we'll meet all the assurances there. So tonight, we're just looking for, I'm looking for a recommendation from you to approve the 2025 general assurances and authorize Ms. Bishop and myself to sign this document.
Daniels Williams and then Ms. Gilio, then Ms. Raymond.
So having the, these assurances, right? So I guess my question is, is it something that we have to defer to the superintendent and the president as in, is one of those things that you're doing things on our behalf? I just, being new, I wanted to know what the rules are. I know that it's generally done this way, but does it have to be?
Yeah, so they, one of the changes in the last couple of years, it used to be all of the board members used to have to sign the document. And then if you were missing from the document, it, it just prolonged. So they changed this over the last couple of years. What they're looking for is the minutes from tonight that the full board authorized us to sign it. And that's your approval and you don't have to sign it. So then Ms. Bishop and I can sign it going forward. So that's the big change from years past. You used to sign it in the past. But now we just have to submit the minutes, authorizing us to sign it and ensuring that we're in compliance.
And I guess that's my follow-up thing. We've been talking over the past three mi, three months, how the minutes aren't in order. So I don't, I don't know, I, I don't understand why. I, I don't understand, is, is it? I just wanted to know if it was a necessary requirement because I feel like it's a yes or a no. And I wanted to know more details about.
We need, we need the authorization to sign this document in order to re, receive federal grants. So it's a must that we have to sign this document.
Yes, Ms. Raymond.
Uh, thanks. So just to speak to it, so this is something that the, the state started requiring school boards to sign. Oh, I don't know, six, seven years ago. And there was a problem where school board members were refusing to sign it and it was holding up monies to the school district. But if you look in the packet, our packet was like, I don't know, 80 pages long tonight. On page 77 of the packet, it says that in the minutes of the school board meeting held on blank date, that the superintendent is signing, that he's informed the members of the school board of the federal funds the district will be receiving and of these general assurances. It used to be that we had to sign that we read the general assurances. Now we can just, they can't make us read it. So if you don't want to, you don't have to, but I would. So, but he's signing that he gave us the document so that we could read it and that on a particular date, we acknowledge what the federal funds are that we're getting, which we got during our packets from Mr. Donovan as part of our budget, you know, process the last couple of months, right?
Yes, but we're going to bring forward probably at the next meeting, an approval of what the estimated grants for next year are going to be. It's an estimate. It's not an exact number yet because we'll be getting that information as the year goes on, but.
So attached when Dr. Andre signs this and sends it up to the state, he has to attach the minutes from the meeting, saying that he's given it and we've authorized him. Personally, I think we can go forward based on the information we got from the budget process. I don't, when is it due? I don't think we have to wait for the updated information from Mr. Donovan.
No, and if we don't sign the, the documents, then it's, we won't be, be able to receive any of it. So again, like the, the money's not out there yet. Can you just?
By June 1st.
Dr. Sarfati just highlighted the paragraph.
So there's a line here that's in bold. It says, "No payment for project grant awards will be made by the NHED without a fully executed copy of this general assurances requirements and definitions for participation in federal programs." Well, that was a tongue twister.
Yeah, it was a big deal a few years ago when we had people refusing to sign.
So, and again, as Mr. Donovan said, we, we don't have the full money yet, but I want to assure the BOE reviewing the 41 assurances, all the definitions. Mr. Donovan, we're in complete compliance. And then once we know our allocation, we'll inform the BOE of what our allocation is going to be or that estimate as soon as it comes out.
So that's my question. It used to be done by all of us. I know that this is a simpler, easier way, saying that only two people can sign it. I just, that was my question. I did read it. Thank you so very much.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll put a motion forward and we'll vote on it. So the majority will say that I can sign on the board's behalf, saying that we've all read it and we all agree and we're doing it. And so your vote allows me to sign on our board behalf. It's like you sign it. You sign it with a yes. That makes sense?
Um, it's, it's not a lack of understanding. It's, it's more a lack of the complete parts. Like, you know, it, it's not a lack of understanding. I do understand. You're signing on the beh, behalf of the board, but we won't know until we're asked.
I can't sign on behalf of the board until I have a majority support. So I never can sign as the school, as a representative from the school district without the majority of you telling me that I can.
Understand, but it changes the difference of nine people voting to a majority, to one person signing. That's all I am highlighting. I'm understanding. I understand fully and completely.
That wasn't, that's not a board decision or a president or Dr. Andre decision. That's a state Department of Education decision. Like we don't, they. Like, we don't, they just decided that that's how the Department of Education would handle it from now on.
So tha- that is what I wasn't understanding. I was thinking that, um, we, we as a board were giving our nine votes to that one person, not that it came down from the state that it has to be that way.
Yeah.
That's what I was missing.
Okay. That's why we need a lot of heads on this board. Okay, so, somebody want to make that motion to approve the assurances?
Um, that's what my hand was raised for earlier.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
Did, do you have a question though first, Ms. Gilio? Okay, all right, so I move to direct the superintendent and the Board of Education president to sign the 2025 general assurances document.
Second.
Gilio, comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Have queued up and highlighted and ready for me to go. Okay, so this brings us up to the redistricting updates. Oh, I have to initial every page?
Yes.
I'm not doing that tonight.
No, it's, like I just did that.
Okay, so for the redistricting updates, um, do you want to speak a little bit, and then I'll speak a little bit?
Yeah, so just really, um, tonight we're looking for, uh, a discussion on where we are. Um, so as many of you may know, um, the city has, um, formed a ad hoc committee that's looking at capital improvements over the next five years. Um, so we've been invited, um, to those meetings, we don't have a seat at the table, um, but they've asked us to, um, come up with our projections for the next five years as Mr. Mr. Smith presented at our, um, budget hearings. He has a 50-year plan, um, that's out there, um, so we're really aware of where we need to kind of go, so. Um, unfortunately, last week, the ad hoc subcommittee was me- um, meeting was canceled. Um, it's going to be rescheduled. Um, but the city is really looking forward to what's their five-year projections on capital improvements. Um, and again, in conjunction with the defined Nashua, I think it's really important of where do we see Nashua in 2040? Um, so I think this is a citywide conversation on what do we look at in the redistricting. Um, also, I've penned a letter. I don't know if we even pen letters anymore. I'm really dating myself.
You had your big, your gray, your gray wig on.
So, um, I have, um, I, several weeks ago, I did write a letter to the mayor asking for a joint ta- task force, um, to be formed. Um, again, in conjunction with defined Nashua, the ad hoc committee, this is not just a department conversation, this is a citywide con- conversation, so, um, so I think there's several walls up in the air that the city's kind of looking at, the ad hoc committee, um, and I think that's important. What we really want tonight is, um, should the task force committee be, uh, formed in, in collaboration with the city? Um, whose voices need to be heard? Who needs to be around the table? What does that look like? Again, it's more of that conversation of, not just redistricting and moving kids, but really where do we need to be in five, 10, 15 years? And again, um, it's a bigger conversation than redistricting. I, I would say it is, um, it's really important if that ad hoc committee and looking at capital projects says, these are our commitments for the next five to 10 years, and these are our bonding conversations, that changes the conversation at the district on redistricting. How many schools are we doing? Is it going to be bonding for schools? So again, that's just not our point of education conversation to have in a meeting. It's a really a, uh, larger conversation, so real, what we're looking tonight is just to, who should be around the table? But, um, we really want to inform this board that the city has formed several smaller ad hoc committees of the capital projects, so we don't want to be, um, in opposition to the work that they're doing, we really want to be working in conjunction and having the same conversations.
Go ahead, Ms. Daniels Williams, and then Ms. Raymond.
So, um, it, would it be something different than the joint school board special? Because those are the, that's the board that helps with building the schools. So going outside of that, on what, what does that look like? What, if we talk about the schools in joint special, what would the task force entail? More details.
That's what we're trying to find out tonight.
Right.
What, what, like, what would some expectations be?
Right. Raymond?
So, a couple of things. This ad hoc committee on capital improvements, is there anybody from the school district on that? Anybody?
Invited to be in the audience, but not at the table.
Can you, um, email the board when we find out when the meetings are, so that we can?
Second, and May 7th, I have, I, uh, President Wilshire emailed them to me. Um, I can forward that email to you guys.
Yes, please.
I said whoever wants to go, we obviously can't make up a quorum when we're there, so we do need to coordinate.
Right, well, if we're just audience members watching, then we're not a quorum.
Right, but if we all start talking.
They're not going to let us talk.
Which we, which we do do. Um, what I would like to see is just kind of what is the, what is the direction that the city wants to go? And in regards to, um, where do we see our, our, our schools heading and, and if we're, if money is a component in redistricting, maybe it's not. That could completely skew how we're redistricting. We may not even do anything, right? If there's no money. So we need to have those conversations first about what's available. Um, but I was looking to you guys to see, so we invite people who hold the purse strings, right? And then who do we want from the community also at the table to talk about, um, what the future of Nashville public schools looks like?
Just, can I follow up?
Yep.
Um, so on, so we have two issues, right? And I think one issue is, as we're trying to figure out what our schools look like, the question is where are the kids are, right? And I think that in Nashua, the, uh, demographics of communities have changed over time. Um, and we're seeing it kind of play out more rapidly now, where we've demolished like a neighborhood full of kids at, what was the Broncy Apartments? And now we've put up Monahan Manor where only 30% of people came back. And we're seeing it again, Major Drive has been approved to be knocked down, that vibrant Dr. Crisp community, and High Rise is put up, and I don't expect to have all of those families come back. And then we have single-family homes being built down at Camp Duset, which is Bicentennial, which is a very full school as well. So I guess, my, before we start, before we continue the process with redrawing our lines for elementary, I, I think that we need to have somebody at the table who can tell us what that five-year plan is or 10-year plan is, because I would hate to see us in a situation where we draw boundaries and then our population is not where we thought they were. Um, and I, I think that one thing that we learned from the, the whole process last year with the middle school is that, is that things are, things are changing. I mean, I just look at my neighborhood, I live at, at Bartel, and it used to be all kids, and now there's two houses with teenagers on my street and no other kids. Um, and nobody's moving, so, like, I don't know how that's going to affect it. So for me, I think, um, I think it's a good idea to take this question of redistricting, to the city, to get maybe Tim Cummings or whoever's in charge of figuring out these things at the city level to let us know, but then also to have, you know, young families who are out there kind of informing us about, about where they are. Like, I would like to see before we start talking about, um, you know, moving elementary kids around, I'd like to have people from those elementary schools. So that we're not talking about, we're not focused on one or another, we're actually talking about what do these communities look like? And, and what can the buildings hold? Right?
So, right. What's the capacity and then what's the expected growth?
Right, but I, I guess my worry is, I think, one of my big complaints last year was that we kind of, um, tacked on some of the elementary school stuff without having members of, of those elementary school communities having a seat at the table. And so whatever we do, I want to make sure that we have somebody from every elementary school. It'll be an unwieldy committee, but maybe it's a task force or something. But I, I feel like we need at least one person from each elementary school involved in the discussion.
Yeah, there was a, there was a formula put together for, I think there were six subgroups for Mr. Smith's redistricting plan. And within each of those subgroups was a combination of community members, um, school personnel, family, um, and just kind of involved Nashua folks. Um, we can look at that same kind of setup when we're creating this task force, which I would be in favor of. It's, would then come down to like, I want us to think about this, we'll have another conversation, and then we'll start asking communications to send out, like, on the board's behalf, we would like to know if you want to join, and have people submit, and, because that's how it happened in the first place was, and this is back, like, when Mr. Parker was here, people were submitting emails, I'd like to be a part of this task force. And that's kind of how they joined on it, with several years of compiling people.
Yep.
Um, but we can look at that same list again, see if anybody wants to revisit those conversations that they've already had, and see if there are new people that want to come in. So kind of starting the process over, but also not without reinventing the whole wheel.
Right, I just, I know for a fact, because people came and told us that there were some schools that didn't have representation.
From the elementary, yeah, I think.
From the elementary level, and I think that if we're talking about elementary lines, we need people from those schools.
Right. Yeah, and I think we have an opportunity to.
Wearing two hats either, like, it's, it's great if you're a mom and a teacher, or a parent and a school board member, but you have to pick which hat you're going to wear in the task force, you can't wear both.
Right, like, I think Ms. Johnson was the, um, the board rep who was just kind of present to kind of speak to what the process was and what the conversations were. This is a go-to for us if we had follow-up questions. So, Ms. Gilio?
Well, I have a question, and then I, I have another question.
Go ahead.
So the first question is, should we be offended that we're being invited to go sit in the audience and not have any voice? I, I personally feel offended, um, because I think the education community is a huge part of the city of Nashua. And I, to me, it doesn't make sense, unless, when they create these subcommittees, we're all going to be able to participate in that. Um, and I'm not sure that that's the case. I mean, I, I just don't know why we're invited but not allowed to speak. I feel like putting duct tape over my mouth if I attend the meeting.
Um, I think I've been having some chats, um, to have us, um, more involved in this. And it has been my goal to make sure that schools remain a priority. What I recognize is that since 2018, we've done significant renovations on six schools. So I recognize the city's ambivalence about, um, you know, putting the fire stations behind schools when their floors are about to crack. Um, so I recognize that there is a priority within the city and what they need to do. But I think when we're talking about the redistricting, we're talking about the evolution of schools, we still need to be there to be like, well, if we're already doing, like, maybe there are projects that we can combine. It would just be great to be able to not maybe be in charge of the meetings, but just to be there and able to offer educational wisdom, like, there's, I don't know anything about fire stations. We'll let them talk about it, but when it comes to schools, you know, we can, we can present what we would like, our wish list. So I am advocating for us to have, um, to have a spot at the table and be listened to. And I will be going to those, there's one I'm going to have to have somebody help me out, because we know I have a hard no if it's Julia's home game.
So, so, so I just want to add, I know you have a follow-up question, but, um, I, I don't think there's any ill intent in excluding us, or purposely any ill intent. I, I think if you listen to the last couple of JSSBC meetings, or even the conversations when we talked about, um, you know, SO funds and just back and forth. Um, I think over the last few months, we've been working really hard with the city on how to build better, better bridges. Um, again, I think there's just a history of people working in isolation, and sometimes, like, the bridges don't happen overnight. And so I don't think there's any ill intent, but, um, as Ms. Bishop says, she's been working hard the last few months on really having conversations on how do we work in better collaboration, um, even with defined Nashua, or the conversations about city planning, right? So I think, again, we can talk about redistricting, but, um, the mayor in his state of the city laid out his plan for the next 15, 20 years, and the amount of apartments coming in. And so if there's a plan in place, I think we would need to work in collaboration. So things are moving forward, we just, again, need to, um, we use the hashtag #OneNashua, we need to be One Nashua. Um, it's just not the school department, or the Board of Alderman, or the fire department, it's one community coming together to really talk about, um, the greatness of the city, and how do we ensure that there's schools and the infrastructure, uh, the buildings to support high-quality teaching and learning every day for, um, I, I keep on throwing out 2040. Like, our incoming.
Like the Jetsons.
Yeah, like, our incoming K's are going to be graduating in, like, 2040, you know, like, it's, it's scary. Um, or, or close to it, so it's right around the corner. Um, so really, this conversation is making sure the city planner, the city, um, CFO, the budget committee, again, that we're aligning all the right resources, so there is a long-term plan to support the infrastructure of our schools.
So we're not going to be totally shut out. I took offense when I should.
No, I, it, it's a, it comes across, but I, I wouldn't take it, I don't think there's any ill intent. Um, Ms. Bishop has really been working hard to build those bridges over the last few months.
I know she has, and, and I'm not usually that thin-skinned, but just, the way it was presented, it just kind of ruffled my feathers.
Yeah.
But thank you for the clarification.
And I think you were in the, the JSSBC meeting when we were talking about this new ad hoc committee, um, and what it looks like for the future of our, our school buildings. Um, and I think preliminarily is there's, I, I would still like to just go and advocate for what we need, I don't want to be ignored. But I think in JSSBC, they were pretty clear that the next six to 10 years is, if there's a maximum capacity of $30 million in bond money that the city is willing to take, that the next six to 10 years, we've maxed out that 30 million on projects that are not schools, that it's now time for the rest of Nashua to shine. So until somebody clarifies it to me, my takeaway from that conversation was there isn't a significant amount of money for the schools. So I think we can certainly go from there as a jumping-off point, but I would like to have that presented not just in kind of a side conversation in another, um, another meeting. I'd like it to be here, where you all hear the same thing that I'm hearing, and then we're moving forward with the same information. So if there is no money, what is it? Do we, do we pivot where we were thinking about going with redistricting? If there is money, how, how are we going to go forward? If nobody cares, and it's just us, and we come up with the lines, what does that look like for us? So we just need to figure out which path we need to take right now. Like Dorothy, when she meets the scarecrow, like, which way, which is the fastest way to the, to the Emerald City? So we just need to figure out which is the fastest way, so we can start putting one foot in front of the other. So hopefully, we have more of a significant update for you, but I just wanted to let you guys know that I have been actively working, um, with the people who hold the purse strings about how I can start eliminating other options, so that we have momentum and progress.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Daniels Williams?
So I have a question. Um, are we asking to be part of the capital, um, meetings that are going on? On that, or are we asking for our own task force?
So I think they need to go hand-in-hand. We need to, we need to keep an eye on what the city projects are, because other city projects are important as well. Um, but I want to be like that, like, the audience members that are always out there, like, remember, don't forget us, don't forget us. So we don't necessarily need to be at the table if they're not going to be doing any school projects, but we still need to be there advocating for the schools. So two different things, so the redistricting task force is something that we're going to come up with as a board.
Mm-hmm.
And we're going to establish who's on that committee, and what, what information we need to have to best make the decisions. And then there's, we just need to follow what's happening with the money in the city, so that we're not over here making these big elaborate plans, and then going to the city and being like, and we only need to bond $75 million. And they're going, no, and we've just wasted months of time. So there are two, there are two steps along the way.
So I guess that's why I'm still, like, confused about the joint special school board committee that does school boards. I understand about the redistricting task force, that's something separate.
Yep.
And then the capital, um, what did you call it? Capital?
Improvement program, projects.
The capital improvement projects that is already, ad hoc committee that's already going.
That just started up, yep.
Yep, that just started up, and the next one's the second and the seventh, got it? Um, and then. And then, what, what, I guess, so there's three different things that we're asking for. Definitely a seat at the table, right?
I'm asking, yep.
Okay. Have, okay, and then the redistricting task force is something separate that you want to set up with all the different teachers and everything.
Yeah, well, that.
And the family, what you just said, you just said, um, a different representative from, from all of diff, different schools on the middle school level. So that would be the redistricting task force?
Yeah, so my preference for the elementary redistricting task force is that it have representation from all the schools, and that we make sure we don't have any schools that are underrepresented. And I think that might be challenging, and we might have to talk about interpreters and some other stuff, but.
But we are not the first.
That's the, that's my only suggestion, so far.
And we're not the first district to be redistricting, so there, there's somebody else who's done this that we can shamelessly steal their plan from.
And that was the thing, because the initial question from Dr. Andre was, what do we want to ask for, right? So that's why, like, I'm trying to get everything together. So we've got three different things that we're asking for, which would be the redistricting task force, we would want to be part of the special Capitol.
We just need to know what is the money? What's the money, what's the budget that we're working on?
Okay, so, and generally, when we build schools, we bond them, right?
Yes.
Have we presented anything to ask, or is that what we need to ask?
That's what we need to have a bigger conversation about, like, it, it's not, we can have all of these wonderful ideas, and we can present them to the city, but we're going to be putting effort into those plans and then presenting, and if they're saying, we're not doing any school-building projects for 10 years, I don't want to waste our time and months of meeting coming up with these plans, knowing we're not going to have this money.
Okay.
So, and the joint school, the, the JSSBC committee is, administration comes to us and says, we want, we have this plan, we want to do it, do we want to bond, do we want to send it to JSSBC, and do we want to ask for a bond? So that's how it gets to the JSSBC. The JSSBC doesn't decide what the project is, it funnels its way through us and then up to them.
So explain to me what it is that we want in this task force. So, exactly, you said the administration superintendent, come up with a project, send it over to the board, we talk about it in this joint special.
And we talk about it here.
Okay, well, we talk about it in the board, and then we bring it to the joint special? Okay, so what, I, I guess we, we want foresight of knowing what money is out there to be had, to be used?
If any.
Okay. I, I guess, on that, Mr. Donovan, is it something that we would ask for? Like, would we say, we were per se thinking that we would like to do such-and-such project in 2025, how, this is the money that we would need? Is, is that what we're saying, or are we saying, let's create something for over the next 30 years that wouldn't go in next year's budget?
Yes, I, I think the idea behind the committee that's being discussed here, that's happening at the city level, the city's looking at all the projects in the city. The city can only bond so much a year. You can't, simply because people ask, doesn't mean they get what they ask for, right? So the city will say, we're going to spend 30 million a year in bonds, or whatever that amount is. That's a financial decision made by the CFO and the mayor, and the Board of Aldermen. So they're going to sit down and say, okay, we have so much money per year over the next, let's say, 10 years. That information is crucial, because going and simply asking a question, say, I want money from Mount Pleasant, let's say, if, if the answer's going to be, well, there isn't any, then you can ask, but, you know, you can ask me to jump off the roof, I'm not going to do it.
But, but if you don't ask, you don't know. Like, but I'm, I'm saying, is like, if, if someone asks me for a chocolate chip cookie, right? Um, that's the favorite, right? So chocolate chip cookie, I can either say, I have chocolate chip cookies, or I don't have chocolate chip cookies right now, but I have the ingredients to make chocolate chip cookies, and I will produce chocolate chip cookies in two years, three years, five years, seven years, whatever, but if you don't ask me for a chocolate chip cookie, I don't know that you want a chocolate chip cookie. I do know it's your favorite, but I do not know that that's what you want.
I, true, but the question is, do, in your example, does the city have the ingredients?
So.
That's this meeting, this meeting that Superintendent and, and President, Board President are talking about, the city wants to discuss with all the departments in the city, what the spending plan for the next five to 10 years is going to be. That's the first step. Asking prior to that.
I understand, I just, I think it's a reach for the board to ask the city, what, how much money do you have for this? Without saying, without giving them an opportunity to be like, okay, well, this is this, and this is that. So you're saying, I don't know that the city has the ingredients? You're right, I don't know if the city has the ingredients for whatever, I can't tend to speak for anyone else. But what I'm saying is, that just like we have put together McCarthy, or we have put together all the other things that came before this board, those were things that we asked for. And I understand that we want a seat at the table, and the redistricting, and everything like that, I just, I personally think that is a reach for the board. Now, if that's what we want, then that's what we do, because it's, it's kind of like, I've always, they say, oh, well, we don't control what goes on over there at that school, or we don't control the teachers, or we don't do that, that we hire someone that is qualified to do that. And I mean, that's what the city did with us. They hired someone, or we were elected by our community to be qualified to do that, put it together and ask for it. I, I don't understand why we wouldn't just ask. Are we scared of no?
The board, you as a board can ask for anything you want. So if you, you continue to bring that up, can we ask? You have to vote as a board to ask, you as an individual can't just ask.
But nobody has given us anything to ask for.
Well, that, because, because there's, right now, we're finishing up the middle school project, we have two other schools that we're working on, we can't do six projects at once.
Okay.
This, what, what we've been doing the last two years has been very difficult to get it all done.
Yes, sir.
Let's, let's get it all done before we ask for something else, that's my suggestion.
Thanks.
We can continue to revisit this, about who we want at the table for our redistricting task force. We'll keep an ear out for what kind of funding is available. I think, just going specifically to Mount Pleasant, we've had multiple meetings where Sean Smith has explained to us that what needs to happen to get that building up to par with all of the other elementary schools is about $25 million. So we know what the ask is. And this Capitol Improvement Project Ad hoc Committee, we can go there and say, what are you planning for with the school? We can ask that, at that ad hoc committee.
Perfect example, right? So, on Mount Pleasant, it costs 25. We learned in, in one of the other meetings, that it hasn't since COVID in the ventilation systems, nothing has been done. It's its turn. We, we sat up here and we said, it's now its turn, is Mount Pleasant's building's turn to be upgraded and served and everything else, because we do it every 30 years, we do it, like I said, I would have to, like, revisit that meeting, but that's, it's their turn. So is, is that something we're prepared to ask for? The 25 million to fix Mount Pleasant? Like, is that where, is that where we're deciding?
That's part of the big-picture conversation that we need to have.
So if we, if we ask the city, have we asked the city to, to help us bond $25 million for Mount Pleasant, because it's its turn?
So can I, can I just speak to Robert's rules on this? So if we want, if that's something that we want to do, right, we would need to have somebody put it on an agenda, and then the board would have to vote, a majority of the board, to send it to the JSSBC. And the JSSBC would have to put it on their agenda and have a majority vote to send it to the Aldermen. So from a, a rules perspective, that's how it works. Somebody on the board has to ask for it to be on the agenda, and then they have to make a motion in here. However, I don't think it would pass right now, given where we are with everything else. I, I think the people on the JSSBC would say, there's a lot on the JSSBC plate, and we're not at that point yet.
But can we give it an opportunity to go?
So if I, if I may, Mr. Smith has already submitted to that ad hoc committee the next five years, right, six years worth of projects, and Mount Hope is, uh, Mount, I'm hoping, I'm hoping, Freudian, but Mount Pleasant is on that list. And so that has been submitted to the ad hoc committee for their, for their knowledge, and so when they're looking at the next five years, so that ask has already been submitted, saying, these are the things, Stello's Field, that's on the list. So there's a list of probably worth of 30 million, close to $30 million worth of projects that Mr. Smith has already outlined, that's already been presented to the ad hoc committee. So they have that information.
That, the list that he presented to us during budget, so we have, we have access to that in the budget materials?
It's, I think he just cleaned up a little, but it's the next 50 years' worth of projects, he just cleaned it up just a little bit for them.
So it would be in that budget binder?
Yes, if.
Or.
You should have.
Mount Pleasant.
All of our capital improvements for the next 50 years, Anne Hur Street, the two high schools, you know, like, it's 50 years' worth of cycles. So there's, that information's there, and if you can't find it, we'll be more than happy to resend it to everybody.
Thank you. So those are just the updates? That was it? Anything, anybody else have questions or comments?
Not on that, but I still have the JSSBC, when we get to liaisons.
Yes.
And, and we had two meetings with them since our last meeting, but I'm going to condense it down, because Dr. Andre had already spoke to some of the wonderful things.
Yeah, I knew that was, we were going to be overlapping a bit with what you were going to be saying, so.
Yeah, so I've been crossing things out, but anyway, when you need it, I'm ready.
Okay, so any other updates on, on that? I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew that it was not a forgotten project, it has a lot of my time in the last couple of weeks, so just wanted to let you know where we're at with that. Okay, so now we are on to liaison reports.
Okay, should I go? Are there others? No, am I it?
Just you.
Okay. So we've had two JSSBC meetings since our last meeting, and one was on March 28th, and then another one was on April 18th. So, a few things that came up, the furniture's scheduled to be delivered to McCarthy in May, and then Building A in June. All of the work is on schedule or ahead of schedule. The music department there has requested some new furniture they're going to need, and a motion approved that at our meeting. The track resurfacing there will be done right after Memorial Day. The, at Birch Hill in Main Dunstable, they've replaced all the handrails, they have to do asbestos abatement on windows, which will be done on weekends. And the first, first-floor windows are all being put in, are bullet resistant, which makes me sad to say that, but, anyway. Penetech dehumidifiers, they're going to start a little bit of work in April, they're putting pipes in the, in the attic, and then the, the work will be finished during the summer. The thing that sparked the most interest at that meeting was that we have three schools that we want to do security vestibule updates on, those are Dr. Crisp, New Surles, and Mount Pleasant. And at that point, we were told that everything was all set to go through for Dr. Crisp, but that the money, the amount it's going to cost, is more than we anticipated, and that we were hoping, we had a $2 million bond, we thought would cover all three schools, and that's not going to do it at all. So the Dr. Crisp security upgrades are, are going ahead. New Surles is problematic, because the estimates they got from people who said they had to change the entire, like, front of the school were just extraordinarily high, and we're not sure what we're doing about Mount Pleasant yet, at this time. So, let's see, let's see, McCarthy tours were scheduled for Elm Street, which I already mentioned. A lot of exterior work is, has been done in the last couple of weeks at McCarthy, and everything at Birch Hill and Main Dunstable is moving, moving nicely, but Main Dunstable's going to need a roof replacement, and that's going to take place during the summer, because there is asbestos involved. And the Penetech dehumission, dehumidification program, I think I just spoke about that. Mr. Dodd brought up at our last meeting that the money that was left over from Franklin Street Building will be transferred to help cover some of the safety vestibules, but that appears to be just over $240,000, which is not a lot when you look at the cost of these vestibules. They are getting new estimates on New Surles, and think there might be a way to do that less expensively, without altering the entire front of the building. And with Penetech, there have been traffic issues, too many cars standing in line out on the roads, and Penetech also has a roof leak, but fortunately, it's covered by warranty. That's, that's it.
And I think what we decided in regards to the traffic about Penetech is, is reassess at the beginning of next year, hopefully, it's less as more people are using buses, but also less schools are using the Penetech fields after school for sports. So we might, if we don't see a decrease in the traffic pattern, we'll have to reassess it, but at this point, we're not going to invest any money until we see a shift in behavior patterns.
Right, and, and one of the things that, that did come up was, that since COVID, we've had so many more students riding the bus, or, I'm sorry, not riding the bus, and having their parents take them to school and pick them up after. And I, I mean, I live near New Surles, and, and I volunteer at Broad Street, and you can see, a, a long time before the students are being dismissed, that there are huge lines of cars, and some of them actually are running their engines the whole time they're sitting there. And, and I do think we need to all rethink about our planet and what we're doing to it, but that's my opinion, so, there.
Raymond?
So just to put a plug for that, we do have buses, we spend quite a lot of money on buses. I live down the street from Birch Hill, and half an hour before Birch Hill gets out, people have lined up, and they're now going all the way from Birch Hill down to Dublin, which is, I mean, it's insane, it blocks multiple side streets. It's becoming a safety issue. I had to drop off an, an older neighbor the other day, and we couldn't get to her driveway, which was, and she wasn't, she's not a person who could walk up the street to get to her home, so if people could just, if you are dropping, watch out for people's driveways and side streets, so.
Yep. And as a parent who was in that pickup line and jockeyed for the first spot, because for some reason, that was my accomplishable goal for the day in grad school, I recognize the competitive nature of picking your kids up, but it is a practice that we need to move away from. Sorry about that, guys, I was one of those parents. I can't wait to see my kids. Oh. It's a IRL, they used to be cute in the underscore, but. Ms. Raymond?
I'm just wondering about order on the agenda, I think we have a non-public, I'm wondering if we can do our board comments before we do the non-public, and then end the meeting?
Yep, that was the plan. Okay, so are we done with liaison reports? Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Now we will bump into board member comments, second, sorry, second public comment. Okay.
We need to tell.
Oh. Yeah.
All right, so why don't we use the why not the end there?
Yep, that's what we're going to do. Thanks, Mr. Johnson. We'll come up with a better plan for this. Alex Homola, come on down.
Price is Right?
I usually do tonight.
All right, thank you, Ms. Raymond, I really appreciate your comments about the redistricting committee.
Thanks, Mr. Johnson. We'll come up with a better plan for this. Alex Homola, come on down.
Price is Right?
I usually do tonight.
All right, thank you, Ms. Raymond. I really appreciate your comments about the redistricting committee. Um, sorry, Alex Homola, 6 Ayr Street, I'll stop and restart. Thank you, Ms. Raymond, for your comments about the redistricting and the ad hoc committee. Um, I obviously, um, come here regularly now, as you guys know, and I try to pay attention to these meetings and this is the first I'm hearing about that, so, um, definitely interesting for people at home who want to be involved and maybe don't feel hurt sometimes. Um, I definitely would like to see representation from all the schools. Um, that's something that I haven't necessarily seen, so. That improved. Um, I will say, since you guys were just talking about Mount, Mount, Mount Pleasant renovations, um, the list that I saw with the 12 or $17 million in cost had a lot of wants on there and not needs, honestly. Like, anybody that's done renovations on their house, they get the initial quote and then you have the heart attack and you go, okay, what do I actually really need? When I looked at that, there was a lot of things on there that even the teachers were like, we could do without that. We would totally, we'll take whatever. So I would urge whoever's looking at that to go back and look at that list because there were really a lot of wants as far as furniture and things that would totally, anybody would tell you, all the teachers would kind of suck it up. Um, the Cliff Book Program was mentioned and I know my daughter has been part of that this year at Mount Pleasant and is so excited for it, so thank you for approving that for two more schools. Um, she gets so excited to bring home a new book and show me all about it and I'm like, you got this for free? Oh, okay, great. Um, so kudos to that. And then since our student reps aren't here tonight, I feel it would be remiss if I didn't tell you that South Musical opens this weekend. Um, they're putting on a production of Little Shop of Horrors. I happen to also be costuming that show and one of my good friends is the choral director over there, so I told her I would give a little shout out. So tickets can be purchased at the door, but come support South. And it is this weekend, Little Shop of Horrors. So if you haven't seen the musical, you're missing out. It's good, don't feed the plants.
Having a suddenly Seymour in my head for the rest of the night. I was the plant in that production at theater camp. Aw. Okay, so now we are going over to board member comments. Started with Mr. Johnson last time, so I'll start with Ms. Raymond this time.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to do a little political here. Um, this Thursday, the House is voting on whether or not to ban, um, to pass a Senate bill that would ban, um, trans kids from sports and another Senate bill that would force teachers to, um, out students. Um, so if students, um, regardless of whether or not it's safe for them to be out to their parents. Um, and so I just want to encourage everyone to talk to their representative about how they feel about these bills so that the representative knows how their constituents feel. Um, and speaking on that, the bill that would ban trans kids from sports also would ban girls from playing on boys' sports. Um, and so I had a meeting last week with, um, Lisa Gengris, our athletic director, um, and Dr. Andre to talk about how we're doing with sports. And we do have some girls who are playing boys' sports, um, mostly wrestling. Um, if this bill passes the Senate and is signed by the governor, they won't be allowed to play. Um, but I also asked about girls' ice hockey because I was confused about that whole process and how new sports are added. Um, and so there's no, it, it's not really money, it's about participation. And so what I learned is that we have to have 15 to 20 kids, um, to play, to field for a girls' hockey team, um, which I didn't know, I'm not a sports person. I was like, well, you only need like 11, right? You only need 10 on the ice, you know, five and five, but really for safety, you need 15 to 20 kids. Um, next year, we have, uh, I wrote it down. Next year, we only have, uh, less than 10, um, girls who are interested in playing and only four who know how to skate. So there's some safety issues there. Um, and so, uh, Ms. Gengris is working, uh, she's been working with other athletic directors about cooperative teams. Um, she's also been working on some other club ideas to try and build up our, um, girls' skills so that we can eventually safely operate a, a team, but it doesn't look like it's something that could happen, um, right away. And then there's stuff happening at the state level about, um, optioning girls. But going back to my politics, um, there are girls who play on boys' hockey teams in the state and if the governor signs this law, um, they won't be allowed to play next year either. So, um, support our kids, support our girls playing the sport that they want. Um, and, uh, if you have a kid who's interested in hockey, now's a great time to get them into skating lessons so that by the time they get to high school, they'll have the skills that they need to play against some of these really robust varsity teams. And I, I think that was my biggest concern. I'm thinking of a kid at 16 who's never skated before against these kids from BG who have been skating since they were two. Um, it just sounded so scary. But the, the conversation isn't over. Girls' hockey is not going away, it's just not ready yet.
Yep.
So I felt a lot better having had that conversation. And so a big thank you to Ms. Gengris for taking the time to walk me through all of the steps because it's, she's done a lot.
Yeah.
Uh, over the last six months, so.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Ms. Gilio?
I think I've said enough for tonight, so no comment.
Ms. Darling?
No comment.
You, Mr. Claffey?
No comment.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
I just wanted to say, um, thank you for all the information. Thank you for taking the time to explain things and talk them out because, um, that's very important and, um, I like that we're going to include community voices in our upcoming things, so thank you so very much and that's all.
You, Ms. Prin?
Hi, thanks. I'm also thankful for the information, being one of the new people on here. I also want to thank you for making sure that the schools are included and represented in redistricting. I'm thinking about hearing in the past that, you know, schools can be closed down because of population decline and yet I'm seeing all these new buildings and I'm hoping this means more new young families will be moving in across, uh, and so that I know that's going to affect just redistricting and that's going to be a big issue for us in the next few years, but again, thank you for the information.
Johnson?
Also just want to hope that the girls' hockey can, um, get off the ground at some point. I, I know a lot of interested families, um, and also the concerns with what the state is doing, um, compared to what federal government is doing is conflicting and really something that, you know, the state itself needs to take a better look at and figure out. Um, also just Nashua South, go beat North. It's, um, Thursday is.
You're going to say that right here?
Thursday is the, um, Thursday is lacrosse. Uh, the, the girls play at four, the boys play at six and the boys is the Munson Cup in, um, honor of former lacrosse coach, Bill Munson, who tragically passed away a few years ago. Um, I'm sorry, I'm just, sorry. Um, it is a big game for my son because he initially in high school as a freshman sophomore was under Coach Munson, um, so he definitely, um, feels some pride and I hope that, uh, everyone can come out and cheer on both South and North teams on, uh, Thursday for lacrosse as well as all the other sports they are competing in for the Battle of the Bridge. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just, during our discussion earlier, I just wanted to give a shout out to, um, New Hampshire Hunger Solutions. They reached out to me today and apparently they are going to Dr. Crisp Elementary with copies of Lulu and the Hunger Monster in both English and Spanish. And the author, Eric Talken, is going to be talking to the kids about the book, but, um, the exciting thing is that they also said that they'd like to distribute a copy, distribute a copy, excuse me, of this book to every second grader in Nashua. So I just wanted to give a shout out to them. Yeah.
Thank you, that's fantastic. Yay, ending on a good note. Okay, I have no comments to make. Um, thank you all for participating. Um, please email me your ideas. If you have somebody that reaches out to you that's interested, pass them along to me, we'll come up with a process, um, for how we're going to build, build this team. So I appreciate you guys. I am now looking for a motion to go into non-public and we will, and you guys can all go on and, and we'll.
So moved to go into non-public?
Yeah. Ms. Bishop? Ms. Bishop, you have to tell me which RSA because we don't know what the non-public is about.
Oh, sorry.
So you have to make it and then tell us the RSA.
All right. So I am looking at going into RSA A32E.
E, okay. All right, so.
So moved.
Sorry, I'm not, I'm not done yet. Yeah, I guess that's good enough, okay.
No, we still need to be on the recorder, yeah, hold on.
Okay, all right, that's all set, so roll call.
By Ms. Bishop?
Yep.
Seconded by Ms. Gilio?
Yeah, okay.
Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Prin?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Mr. Darling?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
So, uh, we are in non-public at, oh, I did it wrong, at 7:54.
Thank you.